The Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at six P M. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Mayor?
Here. Everyone is present. That brings us to our approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we have agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Mayor Protem Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us on to announcements for the evening. I currently do not have any. Moving on to appointments, we have four this evening. Commissioners, do we have a motion on appointments? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we appoint the individuals listed as recommended. I'll just state Jamie Glenn to Parks and Rec, Jaclyn Wagner to Public Art Commission, Sean Hobbins, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, and James Compton, also the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board.
Second. And Commissioner Ottoe?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you to those volunteering their service on these important boards and committees.
Same. Thank you.
I would also like to just extend my, my thanks to the four individuals and acknowledge our staff members that are also stepping up and serving on some of these boards for us. With that, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? The appointment's passed, seven to zero. Brings us on, brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address prior to your comment, and feel free to just approach the center podium here.
Guess I'll start it off. Matt Ludenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. I was wondering, do we have the option to speak on items anymore? No? Okay. So, in that note, I will try to keep this short. I was coming up here today to actually talk about six oh one Lake Shore, South Lake Shore. And the reason I want to do it is try to take a trip with me. Imagine you're coming back from, I don't know, somewhere downstate, somewhere to the east, somewhere to the west, well, maybe not the west, but south at least, and you're coming into Marquette. The reason I'm so passionate about this, this is the first stoplight in the city of Marquette. In fact, this is the first stoplight for probably four or five hours if you really want to push it. You can come from Escanaba and not see a stoplight, or at least not be hit by a stoplight because the one in Harvey is timed to your travel, rate of travel. So there's a point when, if you're coming from somewhere else and you're doing this whole tourism mecca to Marquette, the place that you stop first is South Marquette at Genesee and U S forty-one, AKA six oh one Lake Shore. I would love, this is also the same spot for the Petunia Pandemonium people, so the beautification committee, Parks and Rec, whatever departments make that Petunia Pandemonium thing happen, it looks beautiful every year. What I want to do is suggest that the land, six oh one Lake Shore, be used as their go-to spot, their founding area, treat that as a park that has flowers, has trees, has walkways, that already has raspberries. We could easily plant strawberries there. It's got mint right there at Bum's Beach. We could make that the welcome center of the city of Marquette. It used to be, we had to cross over U S forty-one and get down to a railroad trellis that says, "Welcome to Marquette." That's no longer there. Let's treat this, instead of us trying to sell a small parcel of land, treat this as ours, the city of Marquette's beautified spot, and treat it as such. Put so many parks in there that people want to walk down there. They want to walk their dogs. They want to stop and say, "I want to come back to this spot." Right now, you got pot shops and you got garages. We could easily, and a hotel, those are the things that you see when you say, "Welcome to Marquette." I'd like to change that and have a beautiful park to the right so that when you stop and you check your phone to see which way you got to go, you see a beautiful park that might have a view of the lake. It's the last view of the lake. We've put trees and, or houses in there, and we've put high rises. It's a derogatory term, but we're turning it into Traverse City, and if you leave Traverse City, this might be the first stoplight you get to when you go to Marquette. Please, let's make it beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Angela Rayhorn. I live at ten twenty-five Second Street in Marquette, and I wanted to talk about pedestrian safety because it's been a while. And for the new commissioners who might not know, because I've talked about it before, my son was hit in a crosswalk last May on his way to school at Bothwell. And then just this past month in February, my youngest son, who is a sixth grader at Bothwell, made plans with his friend on the bus that they were going to go work out at the Pief together after school, and his friend was walking to our house and got hit in a crosswalk with very major injuries here in Marquette. And so I cared about this before I started knowing people getting hit right and left in crosswalks. I care about it even more now. And something that I've heard a lot of is just that everything costs money, which I understand, even painting the crosswalk signs costs money, the yellow signs cost money, but something that would be free is just educating the public. I think there was, in July, I have it written down, but last July, there was a, I consider a pretty misleading post from the Marquette Police Department about crosswalk signs and whether or not you need to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks and why they're removed. But it didn't, it pertained to Michigan law, but it didn't pertain to our city Unified Traffic Code ordinance that you do yield to pedestrians in crosswalks. And I think the first step is just making sure the public knows news, two different news organizations covered that social media post. I've seen comments on community websites or web pages, social media pages, referencing that post saying, "Oh, I don't think it's the law anymore. I don't think you have to yield to pedestrians anymore." It's damaging. Crosswalks are there for a reason. I feel like the very first step is making sure people know the crosswalk law, that you yield to pedestrians when they're in a crosswalk. And it is very important to me because kids are getting hurt, and anyone who's not in a vehicle is a vulnerable road user because they're not in a vehicle, and then age can play a factor, whether you're young or old, disabilities, all kinds of things. And I just feel strongly about this because we're a very walkable city, and we pride ourselves on that, and I want to make sure people are safe when they're walking around. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for the public, our chance to respond is at the end of the meeting under Commissioner Comments. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. I'm here to request that the city of Marquette make note of the day each year on March thirteenth as the anniversary of the day the schools were shut. The pandemic restrictions began by that Monday, it was a Friday, and by that Monday, the restaurants were closed except for takeout services, and a long period of lonesomeness and fear began everywhere. This pandemic has faded in our memory, as do many things that hurt. However, it has left an indelible scar upon everyone who lived through it. I do not know any family who did not know of people, if not in their family, close to their family, who passed away. I myself had the experience of having to put my mother into a nursing home in September of two thousand and twenty and not being able to physically see her until March of the following year due to the pandemic. I know that it was controversial from the beginning, but I note that from the time the pandemic began in March of two thousand and twenty, to the time the first vaccinations reached the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, it was ten months, which is unheard of for development of a major medical situation. The fact that the vaccines got here and that my mother was one of the first inoculated in a very small nursing home in the city of Ishmaing, Michigan, shows that when we work together to solve problems, we really can solve problems. I'm dismayed at how quickly people forgot how it started, and I made it a personal note to remind people. But I'd like the city to have a day of remembrance for the start of the pandemic. March thirteenth is that day. That's the day the schools shut, and that's the day it became real. And going forward, we have now gone from where it's a life and death pandemic to where you hope and pray, everyone you're dealing with has had some sort of vaccination. When you hear of someone who's been taken ill with the pandemic, you hope for them to have a quick recovery, as we now know that you can get this virus more than once, and it can have different effects more than once depending on what variant you get. We're going to be living the rest of our lives with this pandemic and the effect it's had on us, and I think the city acknowledges nicely many, many great things that have happened. But if you remember at the time it started, masks for Marquette had to start up, and people sewed masks for health care providers. Up in Nagani, the Ridden Hours of the Jackson Pitt Bar and Grill fed any school child who came to their bar for twelve weeks, five days a week, gave them a free lunch, no questions asked. These people and many, many more stepped up to get us through the worst of it, and I want the city to make note of it and declare this pandemic remembrance day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us on to our one and only presentation for the evening, which is our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from Amanda Gobert.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Gobert. I am the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the city of Marquette. This presentation this evening is just to kind of fill the public in on what we've been working on and what we've accomplished over the course of the last year. Currently, our committee is a little light. We currently have five active members. A new one added tonight will make us at six. We do have several vacancies. Our vacancies within our board do oftentimes have a specific designation based on the different entities that operate under the Parks and Recreation. Currently, one of those is up for grabs with the Marquette Junior Hockey. They are currently working to fill that, but we do have other vacancies available for the public. So if someone out there happens to be interested in seeing what we're all about, our meetings are either the second or third Monday of the month, held at the Citizens Forum within Lakeview Arena at five thirty P M. If you'd like to come out and visit to find out what we're all about, before you decide that you'd like to join us, please feel free. Our purpose with the Parks and Recreation Board is to guide the implementation of the two thousand and nineteen Parks and Recreation Master Plan recommendations, and to ensure that those recommendations are supported by the community and meet city commission-approved policy goals. We obviously, within our organization and our meetings, go over proposals and choose to support or decline support for those proposals that are then passed on to the city. Our city park system has multiple rentable facilities, and there are twenty-one parks within the city, approximately twenty-eight hundred and ten acres. We also have community gardens, outdoor athletic fields in terms of baseball and softball, soccer and basketball, as well as multi-use, single-track ski trails and the fit strip that are all available for public use. The next three slides that I am going to show are pretty much informational for you. These are the projects that have been proposed as capital projects. There are several that are highlighted in green. Those that are highlighted in green are projects that are underway or completed. Those that are highlighted in yellow are currently waiting on grants to determine the next steps. All of those that are listed in white are still things that are up and coming. We have accomplished a lot, but there is still more to go. A lot of what we've worked on has covered many different facilities within the city of Marquette, so we don't focus just on one area. We've done projects and supported projects for Hurley Field, the Lakeview Arena, the Lighthouse Park, at Matson Park, Presque Isle Park and Marina, the Tourist Park. Obviously, there are other opportunities within many other parks within the city that we will continue to be visiting. Obviously, funding is something that we are working toward. That's a big thing. In order to get anything done, you have to have the money to do it, which is where the grant process comes in. And that is why we do have several of these items in yellow. We are working on grant funding. Grant funding is being worked on to be able to get those projects accomplished. During two thousand and twenty-three, some of our major accomplishments include being a support for the design and budget for the Kids Cove project down at Matson Park. That will actually, the process should begin if we ever get spring. We actually might get to get somewhere with that. We have also supported the Lions Club in pursuing their grant funding to rehabilitate the Lions Lakeside Park. We have also supported the city staff in successful application for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application for tourist park day use, access road, and parking areas. We had two different private business proposals within city parks that we supported, and also the Parks and Recreation Board was at the ribbon cutting for Williams Park. And we also reviewed a Spark Grant application for the downtown trailhead. Upcoming, we're looking at several things for this upcoming year. We want to continue to work with the city on ongoing changes to the multi-use bike paths, including signage, safety consideration, a little bit more relocation of bike path, some crossing safety, and the question that comes into play with e-bikes and how they fit into this equation. We will continue to support grant initiatives as they do become available to help our park system within the city. We will input, supplying input on issues or concerns that may arise. One of the issues this past year did come up with safety on the bike path, and we have, we have discussed that at length, and we still get suggestions and input on that. There are going to be renovations for Lighthouse Park that are being looked at, and we are supporting that, and we are also trying to find a viable solution to have a year-round dog park within the city. We do know that's something that has been asked to be looked at, and we are trying to entertain some options that we could propose that might work for that. Issues that have been discussed, the funding, once again, money does unfortunately make the world go round, and our reliance on grants and other funding sources sometimes hold us back. So we are looking at options and more opportunities for additional funding. The implementation of the five-year Parks and Rec Master Plan. We're looking at trying to balance the protecting of our national resources as well as development at the same time. We don't want to lose the natural beauty that's there, but we also want to make things usable in current day. There are several parking lots within the park system, including Lakeview Arena, that are desperately in need of paving, and those are options that we're looking at as well. The paved bike path safety, something that comes into play many times, and the level of use with that particular system, and the monitoring of private usage for the public park system. Are there any questions that might need to be addressed at this time?
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Or comments? Commissioner Smith?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for coming and presenting. It's a super important committee in the city of Marquette, as we are well-known for recreation opportunities. We want to be on the cutting edge of those. I like that you're looking at e-bikes and dog park. These are things we get emails about a lot, so thank you. I did notice some vacancies. Do we have any people that we think are applying for those, or do we need to kind of put the word out?
One of the things that as a committee we have been discussing is how to reach out to organizations that use our park systems to potentially drive some membership interest within those organizations. Obviously, the public itself has an interest, but there are many organizations within the city that use our recreation facilities. Just to use an example, the ball fields are used by Little League and the Legion Baseball Program and things like that. So these are the organizations that we are looking to reach out to, and they're just one example to attempt to see if they've got someone who would be interested in representing them within the board itself.
And I know we usually have a trails representative, someone from the schools, et cetera.
Yes.
So it sounds like maybe your committee is on that, but if you need help, let us know. We've, a lot of us have social media pages or networks, and we're happy to do our job as commissioners as well and try to find folks. There was a period of time when that, the Parks and Rec Board had no vacancies, and there were people lined up waiting to get on that board, so maybe we could get to that point again if needed.
We'd love to see that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse? We, so we don't have public comment during presentations?
I thought she was asking for questions from everybody.
Just from the commissioner, ma'am. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I just want to say, I thank you for doing what you're doing because it's critically important to the city. I mean, recreation is one of our stellar commodities, and the ability of you guys to manage it and grow it and make it work for everybody is just remarkable. I commend you too for bringing the experts onto the committee when you can get them, because you represent such a divergence of, of different activities that without having an expert in each of them, I don't know how you could balance out a coherent program. And whatever I can do to push people along, I'll certainly do that, but ultimately, it's going to come down, I think, on the committee to be able to hijack Shanghai, its, its own members.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ottoe?
So first, I just want to say thank you as well. The, the one thing I will say is it's just a plea to the public for you. When it comes to the Parks and Rec Committee, I think it's, it's one of our most important committees we, we actually have in the city of Marquette, and it's, it's much for the reasons that were already stated by the other commissioners. Obviously, when we think about Marquette, we think about the outdoors. We think about all the things that are, that are vibrant in here, but what a lot of people don't understand is parks are really tough. They cost the city a lot of money. They don't make any money, right? So there's a lot of unique things that come up with, with Parks and Rec, especially in discussions, and they have some unique problems to solve. So I urge anyone in the public that may be interested to join, to join, because it, there are problems that need to be solved, and we want to keep those parks awesome. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the commission? I just want to again, thank you for coming and presenting for us tonight, and please keep doing your best, keep doing the great job that you guys are doing, and if you do need assistance from us, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, which will require a roll call vote due to items three H and three J. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve consent as presented.
Do we have, Commissioner Ottoe?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to our first new business item of the night, which is the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment reimbursement agreement. City Clerk, background please.
Of course. The former Marquette Hospital Brownfield plan was approved by the city commission at their May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Since that time, considerable efforts have been undertaken to seek additional funds to reduce the potential to seek additional funds to reduce the potential brownfield repayment obligation for demolition expenses. To date, over 16 million in state funds have been secured to assist with the development. However, despite this historic investment by the Michigan Strategic Fund, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and the legislator in, to the Marquette community, additional expenses not covered, covered under these funds are still projected as a barrier to the demolition and redevelopment of the site. The Brownfield Plan provides for reimbursement of any remaining demolition costs as well as site preparation cost, public infrastructure and interest. A component of the Brownfield Plan is a reimbursement agreement between the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, MBRA, the Northern Michigan University Foundation, NMUF, and the city of Marquette that outlines the roles and responsibilities for the Brownfield TIF reimbursement between the MBRA and the entities that conduct eligible activities, as well as repayment priority. Under this agreement, as eligible expenses are incurred, the cascade of reimbursement will be the city, the MBRA, and then the NMUF. The reimbursement agreement is a required submittal for the MSF Act 381 work plan. In addition to this agreement, the city commission will also need to consider a development agreement regarding the activities covered under the Brownfield Plan in the near future. This agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and will be considered by the MBRA at their March 16th, 2023 meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. However, the city of Marquette will be the first priority for reimbursement as expenses are incurred under the former, former hospital redevelopment Brownfield Plan. Recommendation, approve the reimbursement agreement with the Northern Michigan University Foundation and authorize the mayor and city clerk to, to sign. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Larson?
Uh, I would move to approve the reimbursement agreement with, uh, Northern Michigan University Foundation and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second that motion, your honor.
Commissioner Larson, any discussion?
Uh, I think this is an important step that, you know, we need to take for redevelopment of that area of the city. Uh, fully support it and tend to vote yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only second that by saying that we've been working the issue for some time. I think the, the basics of it are well-known by the community as well as the commission, and I heartily endorse the motion to proceed.
Commissioner Smith?
I would just add that none of this is news. It's just good news. The same thing we've been working towards for months, if not over a year at this point. And I wanted to give a special shout out to our assistant city manager, Sean Havens, for his dedicated efforts for months and months to push this through and make sure that we're able to tear down that, that ugly building in the middle, middle of our city and hopefully have, um, some interesting development there soon. Thank you, Sean.
And one else? If I could just ask our city manager real quick, just for the public knowledge as well as our, the media outlets that are here, if the commission does approve this tonight, what the next steps would look like in this process?
Specifically regarding the Brownfield?
Yes.
Steps? So at this point, um, with the reimbursement agreement, um, if it were to be approved tonight, the next step would be looking at development agreement, um, that would be coming later, uh, most likely in April before any work can be done.
Thank you. There's no more discussion? Just checking, doesn't require a roll call? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that brings us to our last new business item for the night, which is the resolution of intent to sell city property, Cliffs Dow, which does require a roll call vote. Uh, city clerk, if you could give us the background, please?
Parcel 0510990, commonly known as Cliffs Dow, is a city-owned, former industrial brownfield located at 2001 North Lake Shore Boulevard in the city of Marquette. The site was historically utilized as a factory producing pig iron and wood-derived chemicals from 1902 to 1969, and sat vacant until 1997, when the city purchased the entire 77-acre property with the intent of securing control over redevelopment options for a large portion of Lake Shore property. As a condition of the sale, the city agreed to bear all responsibility, liability and compliance requirements related to the site. Following the acquisition, the city sold 32 acres on the north and south ends of the property within the next two years, but has retained control over the remaining acreage, which has been reduced to the necessary relocation of portions of Lake Shore Boulevard and Wright Street. The city has continued to monitor contamination levels on the site and has engaged in limited remediation efforts, including a source area removal of 845 tons of tar conveyance material, wood tar and soil in 2011. Following a purchase inquiry from a developer for the remaining property, the city, the city released a request for developer qualifications, RFQ, in 2018 to seek qualified developers. Responses were received from S&amp;P Enterprises and Veridia Group. A subcommittee of the city commission reviewed the responses and recommended negotiate, negotiating the sale of the property to Veridia Group. The recommendation was subsequently approved on July 17th, 2019, and a resolution of intent to sell was adopted. Since the resolution of intent to sell was approved, the city manager's office has engaged, engaged in negotiation with Veridia Group for the sale of the property, in addition to conducting required environmental monitoring and reporting. Due to multiple factors, the parties have been unable to come to an agreement for the sale. Last year, the state of Michigan was allocated $34.2 million from the state budget and is seeking an additional $63.6 million in funds from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to replace the aging DJ Jacobetti home for veterans. The Cliffs Dow site has been identified by the state as an ideal replacement location for our new veterans home due to its location within the city of Marquette, the size of the property, and the proximity to the hospital in Lake Shore. Accordingly, the state has requested to enter into negotiation for the sale of this property. Given the unique circumstances of this request and the nature of Cliffs Dow site, the city manager is recommending approval from the city commission to suspend negotiation with Veridia Group and enter into negotiation with the state of Michigan for the express purpose of the construction of a new veterans home. The city manager commends efforts by Veridia Group to envision the future of an extraordinary portion of city-owned property and looks forward to future partnerships with upcoming community development efforts. Fiscal effect, to be determined by negotiation. Recommendation, suspend negotiations with Veridia Group and adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell the property, the subject property to the state of Michigan. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. I'm just looking at our city manager here. Do you have any additional comments you wanted to add or no?
Sure, I, I just wanted to make sure that, um, I stated that in conversations with the Veridia Group leading up to this moment, um, they have been, they stated that they are more than willing to step aside um, and be very supportive of the city if this were the, the choice of the commission, um, to really explore this idea, um, for the community. So I just wanted to make sure that that's, um, is stated and very clear, that they are willing to, to do, to do this and step aside.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, thank you. Um, given the circumstances surrounding this, I think the motion is entirely in order. And I would make the motion to suspend negotiations with Veridia Group and adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell the subject property to the state of Michigan.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse, you have additional comment?
Well, I would only go back to the idea that, uh, Veridia has been a, a good partner for the city on a number of projects. This is nothing negative. This is, uh, really an opportunity that I think both Veridia and the city realize should be pursued and pursued aggressively. And this motion simply gives us the opportunity to do so.
Commissioner Smith?
I would agree. I, I think that it's evident that we've had solid prior partnerships and continued partnerships with Veridia, and their willingness to step aside, um, on this one, um, I'm grateful for. I was on the committee in 2018, um, along with, I believe it was Commissioner Stonehouse and Commissioner Schlegel at the time, and Dennis Stackowitz. I remember several meetings with, um, Bob Mahaney and, and trying to work on that. And it's, we just really haven't had any activity on that in five years at this point. So I think it's time that we consider something else for the Cliffs Dow site. And, um, what better way than to serve a population that needs some services? Our veterans, um, are definitely a group that I would like to see us be able to give back to if we can. Not that we give, obviously, it's a transaction. So we need to make sure it makes sense for the city fiscally. But, um, at the same time, I think that that would be... I, I just envisioned down by the lake shore, right? Cliffs Dow, it's across the lake. It's not on the lakeside, it's on the other side of the road. We've had this conversation many times. But I think a veterans home there is something that the community would, would tolerate maybe better than, um, condos or housing or that kind of a thing. So that, I could just see if we can get through all the hurdles, which there are probably a lot, but this is a first step to even see. Um, I think it could be a really great thing for our community in keeping that veterans home local. I've got a lot of really very close family members and very close friends that would benefit from this, and I know I'm not alone in that, meaning like that they would have a veterans facility in the town. Um, and I know that there are a lot of veterans who rely on those services in our area. Um, I would also like to add that this would be a partnership opportunity with the state of Michigan as we work through, um, any environmental concerns, funding concerns, et cetera. And we've got a solid foundation of partnership, but this would be working on a project. It's, you know, in lockstep with the state of Michigan, which I think could be a, a good opportunity as well. Thank you.
Any, Mayor Protem Davis?
Um, I will echo what our two previous commissioners said. I think this is the very first step in, in pursuing an opportunity to keep the veterans facility in the city of Marquette, which I think is very, very important, not only for all the people that work there, also for the veterans and their health care, um, being that we have a regional medical center here in Marquette, and we want to make sure that that regional medical center is thriving. And we were hoping that our veterans are thrive at this new facility. If we can, if we can make this through all of those hurdles that we are, we will be seeing in the future, and I'm very hopeful that we are able to come to an agreement for this.
Any additional comments, questions from the commission? Commissioner Ottoe?
I'll just add that I, I think this is a very encouraging first step. Um, it, it's one of those things that I think everyone that's on the commission is willing to say that it's been a long time coming with that property, and it, it's, it's good to see it go in a direction that is not stagnant. Um, everyone that kind of sits in this room that has a, a know of the Cliffs Dow site is always wondering what's going to happen with it. At least now, there's a little bit of clarity that maybe we can move forward and look at something else. So I'm excited about the future, and I think it's, it's a no-brainer.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I, I really just need to echo what everyone said. I've been on the commission two and a half years now, and nothing has happened with the site in the entire two and a half years, except for us saying, oh, we really should do something with that. I know it was one of the goals that our city manager gave herself when she first started, which was to try and get something going here. And I really like that we're making steps towards that. So I'm excited for what could come, um, cautiously optimistic, and I look forward to hearing what comes from these negotiations.
You got anything?
Uh, again, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the city of Marquette to provide a valuable service to our nation's veterans, uh, and those, uh, in our local area, keep jobs in our local area. Uh, it's, uh, Cliffs Dow, you know, I can't think of a better use for that site. Uh, and I think, you know, with, uh, Commissioner Smith's comment, I think the public can get behind, uh, something like this versus selling that, you know, to private enter, uh, enterprise for condos or, or otherwise. So I fully support this.
I'll try not to be too repetitive, but, um, I'm going to just echo all of that, but, um, you, you know, this, there is, um, no doubt in my mind that there's going to be a numerous amount of challenges that could be occurring, uh, with pursuing this avenue. And I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic to see if we can pull it off. But, uh, you, you know, so far, we've had a lot of very challenging projects that we've put in kind of that success column. And I've got a lot of confidence in our team to pursue this the best they can. If there's nothing further. Uh, and this is a roll call vote. So city clerk, if you could help me out there?
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayer?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to our second public comment session for the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. If you haven't already, please state your name and physical address when giving public comment, and feel free to approach the center podium.
This room, you're much more eloquent than I am. Uh, I wanted to say Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. Uh, I, what was it, 2016, 2018? I was curious about Cliffs Dow. Um, presented my own three-minute presentation. Uh, but at the same time, I'm glad to see that this is going to, uh, help veterans because not every service that veterans receive at DJ Jacobetti is for disabled veterans. Uh, there are a lot of psychological and non-physical damages that happen. Um, and I just want to say, this site offers a great little spot for a park, for a dog walk. I would love to see, um, therapy dogs walking, uh, veterans who, who need it. This is a good spot for it. It's safer, more protected, um, has the same view, so let's keep that in place. Um, so by all means, thank you for doing all that. That's great. Now, I'd like to switch gears though and go back to, so last week I came up here and I, I talked about, uh, an aquarium and a science center, and how I'd like to bring more recreation into this town. And our Parks and Rec does a great job. I want to suggest though that not every recreation, quote, theme is competitive. And right now, Lakeview Arena is treated as the competitive sports site. Um, and, and the parking lot needs to be fixed. Please do that. But what I also want to say is, that's a site that we, the city, have paid for. So we, the city, um, residents expect to have a skating rink. And I, and I mean an ice skating rink, a, a point where you can go around in circles. You can go and practice your, your, uh, you know, your shots or your drops or your jumps or whatever your spins are. Oh, by the way, there is not just hockey at Lakeview Arena. There is figure skating, and this weekend, they've got a jubilee. So please go check out some of the work that, um, our very talented skaters are doing. Literally, they have just as many awards as the hockey team. So please encourage all skating activities. And in that sense, Minnesota has a policy that if the city provides, uh, service during the times of the day when the service, when the facility isn't being rented by a specific service, it can be used by the general public. So if you want to go skating at three o'clock in the afternoon right now, you can't. If you want to go skating at eight o'clock in the afternoon, you have to buy time to go skating, just by yourself. So as a resident, I pay $250 for an hour's worth of time to skate out there by myself, if that's when I want to go skating. So in that sense, the, the Parks and Rec plan, please consider opening up skating facilities as a tourist mechanism for the city of Marquette. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Craig Patterson. I reside at 518 Lakeside, Mackinac City. Thank you for your decision tonight on the pilot for Blacklock Rock Crossing. Uh, it'll be 50 units, as you know. It'll be a $13.1 million investment on West Ridge. And, um, we look forward to presenting a site plan to the planning commission in the next week or so. We've already submitted everything. And, um, it'll have affordable rents, be up to 80% of the area median income. And I think that's really important as you look at the breadth of need within the community. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, to finish up on my first statement of public comment, the name I've given to the anniversary of the pandemic is ode to joy slash remembrance of sorrow because we did survive, and the sorrow is that will never be the same again, but we did survive. Now I'm going to switch gears. Now I'm going to switch gears, and I'm kind of speaking as a part-time adjunct instructor at Northern, because this week, we're studying administrative law and we're also studying environmental law. So my students will be seeing the rest of the slide presentation I've done on the history of the Cliffestow Chemical Company. I invite any and all of you to join us at Northern Fine Arts Building, Room 314, starting at noon. We generally run to 1:40 with a 10-minute break. The reason I'm presenting it to my students is when I took law school in Ann Arbor, everything in the textbook had to do with some other place in the world besides where I was actually studying. So I made a concerted effort in teaching to bring things home to the students. For example, when I, my first day of class, I told them about Cliffestow as a way of introducing how complicated a business can be when it leaves an environmental stain, and no one in the class knew where Cliffestow had been, so I passed around huge maps of Marquette, and we identified that. So there is a gap in knowledge between the people who grew up with it and the people who came later that will continue to need to be addressed with a lot of education. And again, I'm serious, you're invited to the class on Thursday at noon. I will not pick on you. I may ask you to introduce yourself, but I won't pick on you. Second of all, cautiously optimistic is what the history of Cliffestow Chemical Company has presented itself as, cautiously optimistic that better things, better times were coming. I am a practical environmentalist, which means I focus on what's real and what's not real. I think getting the state involved with Cliffestow Chemical Company is the best way to get the taxpayers out from under. I suggest you sell them the property for a dollar as long as they take all the environmental responsibility. If the deal was good enough for the city of Marquette, it should be good enough for the state. Your biggest issue in the future is going to be in the springtime, when the condominium developers start ripping apart the topsoil across the street from the bio life place. When they start pulling apart that part of the land, the environmental situation beneath the ground will come to the forefront, the smell, the odor, the chemicals that are there. So prior to Cliffestow being resolved, I would hurry up and get that agreement signed with the state, okay? Because I'm not exaggerating, I simply cannot speak in terms of hyperbole. When they peel the topsoil and take down the trees in that piece of property, they're going to find stuff that they don't want to find, and that's not just a statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Which brings us to comments from the commission. We're going to start things off with Commissioner Smith and work this way around.
Thank you. First, I wanted to mention, thank you, I forgot your name, gentleman with black rock crossing? What's your name? Craig. Thank you, Craig, for saying something, for coming, and I'm excited to see what this project could be for the, go to the public. This type of item is on two agendas, so it was on consent today. The next meeting, it will be on new business or probably old business, so we will talk about it more broadly. It wasn't like it was something that was hidden. It has to be on two agendas, so just, I know the public might have been a little bit mixed up about that, so I wanted to clarify that. And secondly, I know it's like the shot heard around the world, but I recently had my appendix out, and I just wanted to thank the entire community for your support and love during a difficult time. I made it on the other side, and I live to tell the tale, so thanks, everyone.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, Your Honor. Did anybody catch it when we were going through the Parks and Recreation presentation? The amount of acreage we have in parks? 2,810 acres of public parkland in the city of Marquette. That's huge. So bear that in mind when we look at a little tiny corner down at the end of the south end of Founder's Landing, down by Genesee, and we say we need more park. Just bear it all in mind, and bear in mind, too, that we have to pay for what we buy. So the physical responsibility of the city of Marquette is huge, and trying to balance out, how do we get a reasonable tax income, which is the only way the city has of getting any money, by the way. We can't go and get sales tax, we can't do room tax, we can't do the things that you think the city could do. We are limited strictly to one source of income, and that's personal property tax and business property tax in the city of Marquette. So I don't know where we're going to end up with it, and I don't know where we're going to go there, but we've got some very definite parameters that we have to work around, and the public needs to know that and then understand it as we go through the process. Cliffestow will be interesting on a number of fronts, but it also presents a number of opportunities. So let's see how far we can take that, and I commend city staff for putting the initial package together, for making the contacts and beginning to start this highway that we're going to be taking slowly, but hopefully we'll get to an ending that will work for everybody. And lastly, I'm ready for spring. Anytime he wants to come, I mean, my snow shovel's ready to be put away, I'm ready for spring, so let's all hope that'll happen. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. Just to Commissioner Stonehouse's comment, you probably got to move south if you want spring in March, just going to say it. I wanted to point out something that we had on our consent agenda. It is consent agenda item 3J. I wanted to bring it to the forefront a little bit without making Rachel read the entire resolution, which is supporting Senate Bill 19 and Senate Bill 20. Those are the dark store bills that have been introduced by Senator Ed McBroom, and they are to try and help cities and counties fight what is happening all over, where we're losing so much money, millions of dollars in taxes due to companies who are operating, getting the same taxes that they would as an empty building. It is something that has hurt our community pretty drastically. Before I was on the commission, I believe the reason the library cut their hours in the first place was due to a dark store tax loss. Don't quote me, but it's, there's a lot going with it, and obviously, it hasn't gone yet, but we gave it our support today, and I think it's something that's important. I also want to thank everyone who has reached out in the last couple of weeks to me about like 601 South Lake Shore, the property. You are being heard, and I understand that we don't necessarily want another hotel or another big building there, and I want you to know that this is definitely something the city is taking into consideration. We're not just jumping to a tax base thing. There are more than, there are seven commissioners on this that have to look at everything and make sure we're making the right decision outright, but keep talking to everyone. The more we hear from the city and why, the more we can explain where we stand, and you can tell us yours, I really do thank everyone that has gotten so involved in this. It's very nice to see. Other than that, I'm good.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to just highlight just a couple of things that were on the consent agenda as well, that I think that, of course, we were all in support of. You know, the first is, you know, the cultural trail project that's promoting, you know, the work of native artists and highlighting the perspectives and challenges that are, as an underserved population. I'd like to applaud the Arts and Culture Committee for moving forward with that project there. Again, on the Black Rock Crossing item, this is an important piece that we have been, that the community has been asking for, you know, in the city here, to have a property that potentially serves, you know, those that are earning less than 80% of the area median income, and also has, you know, a PILT agreement that potentially is going to come along with that, is important to the city of Marquette. And then finally, I just want to reiterate, you know, the support of, you know, SB 19 and SB 20, the dark store tax. While, you know, it has had issues here in Marquette in the past, we have other communities in the UP that are currently working on this and fighting against this, namely, Houghton that's happening right now. And so I think, being, having our commission in support of that is a show of solidarity with, you know, local and small communities across the UP. Thank you.
Commissioner Otway?
Thank you, Mayor Mayer. First, I, I told you, I love saying that. The first thing I'll say is, I just want to thank Margaret. I love the idea of a COVID-remembered Day. The pandemic is something I think we all have kind of put on the back burner. It's still happening. I mean, we still, we have two city employees here that don't have COVID, but they're being mindful because they are sick or they're susceptible to other things, and these are things that we're just more aware of now. But as somebody that came from the DDA and was chair of the DDA, I can tell you the direct effect it had on our businesses, and it is something I think that would be a wonderful thing to remember, so I'd take that heavily, and I want to thank you for that. Second, I want to thank our public comment on the, just the dangerousness of traveling and people possibly getting hit by cars. As we all know, our police department does everything possible to try to make people safe in this city, but this is one thing that they probably can't do anything about, because the biggest issue is people probably on their cell phones. And it's one thing that, as a public person and somebody that's sitting here, I will urge people in the public to please stay off of your phones while you're driving. I can't tell you how often I'm driving on Third Street or even on Washington or any road in the city, and you look and see somebody that is just on their cellphone, and it is the most dangerous thing in the world. When your eyes are not on that road, anything can happen, and I'm guilty of it. I've done it, I think we've all done it, and it's something I want people to just be mindful of, because people are getting hit by cars, and that's happening with more and more traffic in the city, and it's going to continue happening. But I do think that some good examples were kind of led and brought up, especially with the painting of crosswalks. I think we can do more there, and I hope that's something we really focus on. Lastly, I will talk on 601 South Lake Shore. Wasn't planning on talking about that at all. I know, you know, first, thank you to everyone who's here tonight. I know some of you are probably here just to hear about that and hear if we had anything to talk about with that. I'll echo Commissioner Hanley. I've had a lot of people reach out to me, and I've had people reach out to me stating differing opinions, both on each side. In fact, our last meeting, we had a public comment, both on each side. It's one of those things that's very, it's a very divisive thing, because it's a piece of property that's, maybe it's not necessarily on the lake, it's pretty close. But I will say, everyone that's on this commission and anyone that is mindful and works in the city is very mindful of wanting to protect that lake shore. We all want to. We don't want to use the buzzword of this is becoming Traverse City. This is never going to be Traverse City. We don't want it to be Traverse City, but we also have a responsibility to make sure, on the other side, we're not raising people's taxes again when we don't need to necessarily do that. We have to make sure our employees get paid fairly. So it's a very delicate balance, and it's one we are really considering on every angle. So thank you for that, and continue to please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be, I'll be quick here, I'm not going to go through everything, but I did also want to just add with the Senate Bill 19, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Excuse me.
How easily I'm forgotten. One of the advantages of being last, though, is everyone has covered the things that I wanted to say. But I do want to say, Ms. Brum, thank you for talking about March 13th, and like everyone else, what went through my mind is all of the changes that we needed to make immediately and how, what we did to shut down the community. It's going to be one of those remembrances like 9/11, you know, where were you on that day? And, you know, significant for our community, significant for our nation, and significant for our world, so thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Rayhorn, yes, patient safety and walkability in our community is very, very important, and it's been talked about as we go through the master planning process. So if you haven't been participating in that, please do, and anyone else who's concerned about walkability and pedestrian safety, please provide your input to the master plan. And thank you, Mr. Patterson, for coming up from Traverse City on this very easy-to-travel day. Pardon?
Mackinac City, was not?
Mackinac City, you're, Mackinac City, yeah, on this. Either way, you had to cross that bridge. You know, we've been working on housing for several years, and the progress seems to be so slow, and no matter what we do, it's just, it just doesn't happen, and I'm just, this is like one of those hopeful times that we are able to address some housing that would be available to the low-income, so we'll probably see you at the next time that you come before our commission. And also, Commissioner Hanley, thank you for talking about McBroom's Senate bills. Every one of you can provide some input to your senators to help pass this bill. It's easy to do, get on their website, send them a little message saying you supported this dark store issue. It's very significant to our communities and to several communities around the state, so please think about doing that. If you've never done it, you'll be surprised at how easy it is to provide input, and they do listen, just like we listen to everything you have to say. Thank you.
It's your turn now, Cody.
My apologies. I was just going to add with Senate Bill 19 and Senate Bill 20, that, you know, this is something that really can just cripple communities like here in the Upper Peninsula, and I'm glad one of our neighboring communities, Houghton, is taking a stand, and I'm thankful for Senator McBroom's leadership in stepping up and challenging. Frankly, this, it seems like an injustice that is occurring right now, and I'm glad that we were able to stand in solidarity with them, and I wish him the best of luck moving forward with those bills. I feel like I had a couple of things, but City Manager, if you could maybe, if you can, maybe touch on a little bit the local versus state law as far as pedestrians go, I think that would be useful. And I think that was the only follow-up I had for you, though, if you don't mind.
Actually, if you don't mind, what I will do is provide a summary over to the commission as a whole with that language for you sometime this week. Good night. I do have some updates if you're, when you're done.
With that, comments from our city manager?
It's actually going to be a quick one, but just a really big reminder to join us this Wednesday evening for some hockey and actually for a really great cause. The Pigs in Heat Charity Hockey Game. Is that what's going to be coming from the police department here? Because I can't remember who won the last one.
Did you tell her to say that right?
But the Pigs in Heat Charity Hockey Game, which features our area firefighters and police departments from both city and townships, and some of our sheriffs here, they're battling it out on the ice, and if you haven't been there, it is a real great time. And this is, this goes to a good cause. It really supports local families who have lost their homes to fire. These are, these funds are used and are used locally within the city here and our townships, and really are there in a time of need, and it's something that we hope none of us ever have to experience, but we are so incredibly grateful that this charity exists. The puck drops at 6:45 at Lakeview Arena this Wednesday, March 15th, if you want to come and tell me who I should be rooting for, because last year was a little bit brutal. But I might have some funds to match here if you guys are interested, and tickets are a dollar. I do not have any, but our police department does, and so does our fire department, so please join us for that, and wear your red or blue. I might be mixed, we'll see. He's standing here, so it might be blue, might be red, but that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned at 7:03 PM.